Wednesday, June 21st, Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. We're glad to have some guests here today to discuss the behavioral health crisis systems intensive care coordination. Just a reminder, if you haven't been at one of our study sessions before, our study sessions are for informational purposes only. We do not take any action in our study sessions. We also don't take any public comment. If you'd like to provide public comment based on some of the things you heard or saw here, you're welcome to provide public comment at our 5:30 business meeting during general public comment. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob Tryansky, our coordinator of Behavioral Health Projects, to walk us through the presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are pleased to be with you this afternoon to share. I want to spend a little bit of time, but not too much time this afternoon, to put in context some of the work that has been done over the last five years that preceded some of the work that's been done in the last 12 to 15 months to bring online all of the components of the behavioral health crisis system that we now have. I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Some of you may have seen this graph before, but I want to start with a little then and now. So, our work together as a Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition really began in 2017 through the budget process into 2018 as we were anticipating going to the community for the sales tax for Proposition 1 to support the creation and the improvement of our behavioral health system of care. At that time, 2018, if you were living in Douglas County and you found yourself in a behavioral health crisis, one of the things that you would run into is what's called the revolving door phenomenon. So because our crisis system was underdeveloped and because the number of services and interventions wasn't fully realized, a person in crisis would often find themselves in a fairly simple linear process where someone would make a call to 911 because they were having an emergency. If you call 911, one of two things happens. Police arrive or paramedic arrives. Police and paramedic do great work. The Lawrence Police Department and all of our law enforcement partners, the Sheriff's Department, KU, have all committed to and invested in crisis intervention training. But when the process of getting somebody to get the care that they need starts with these two paths, too often people wind up in the wrong place. They either wind up at the emergency department. And again, nothing wrong with an emergency department if you're having an emergency, but it's not an ideal environment for a person who's experiencing a behavioral health crisis. Things move really quickly. There's a lot of other things going on. The people that work in emergency departments often don't have the training that behavioral health professionals have. And so as a result, what frequently would happen in 2018 is people will come out of the emergency department or come out of the jail or go to the state hospital or another residential treatment facility, and they find themselves cycling back around to crisis. So what we have done collectively as a community between 2018 and today is to put a series of interventions in between that moment of crisis and hopefully in what's called in the sequential intercept model Intercept Zero, diverted people away from jail and into treatment, diverted people away from emergency department and into a more therapeutic appropriate environment. So those components are 911, those components are a mobile crisis team, those components are a 24/7 treatment and recovery center. And what we want to talk about today is this part of the model, which is the post-crisis community-based support that keeps a person from going back through that revolving door and getting access to the care that they need. We've talked a lot about the treatment and recovery centers' potential and capacity to provide the right care in the right setting at the right time. But the same is true for people who need outpatient services, who need residential treatment services, and who need care coordination services. So five years ago, the county commission supported the passage of some property tax dollars that we invested or that the county invested into starting this work before these components came online. We invested in psychiatry. We invested in a series of interventions in the emergency department to embed behavioral health expertise, so behavioral health clinicians, peers, and to add a component that we're going to talk about today, which is care coordination for people who experience a crisis and then trying to navigate in the community. How does this work fit into all the things that we're doing as a coalition? Well, I'm just going to remind you, again, repetition is the key to success. So you'll see a couple of slides that some people have seen before, and I apologize to that. But we've been very much in some ways building the plane as we fly it. And just make sure I project here. And so this afternoon, we want to talk about a partnership between Douglas County, between Heartland Regional Alcohol and Drug Assessment Center, and some support that has been coming from our grant with the Sunflower Foundation. Heartland Radac is one of nine key partners in the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition that started meeting in 2017. That coalition is dedicated to achieving this vision as expressed in the Community Health Plan, building an integrated system of behavioral health care that serves the whole person, their whole life, so they can realize their full potential. The specific goal that the coalition set for itself was to focus on this 24/7 behavioral health crisis system and to build an integrated system of care that moves from crisis and illness as a norm to recovery and prevention as a practice. The three focus areas of that plan, often people in the community will ask, where's the plan? Where's the plan? Where's the plan? The plan has actually been in place for the last five years, and there's a pretty clear structure to that plan. First is to prioritize prevention. So we want to get upstream, impact young people before they find themselves in situations that create unnecessary struggles and suffering in our community. We want to promote integration across the system of care, and we want to improve access to care. What we're going to talk about today with care coordination is a service that really achieves all three of these focus areas. And we're going to talk about a service that is also linked to nearly all of the behavioral health objectives in the Community Health Improvement Plan. So one objective, as we all know, has been to reduce the number of people who present at the emergency department in behavioral health crisis, reducing the percentage of booked individuals at the Douglas County Jail, decreasing the age-adjusted suicide rate, reducing the proportion of people engaged in binge drinking or, you know, consuming alcohol at a rate that is not healthy or helpful, reducing the number of opioid prescriptions, increasing the proportion of adults with serious mental illness who receive treatment, and increasing the proportion of adults who are homeless with mental health issues who receive mental health services. So what I want to share today, we've made really significant progress on these goals because of the tapestry of things that we've been doing. So one of our goals was to reduce the number of people who presented the emergency department in behavioral health crisis. Between 2018, when we started doing this work, and the end of 2022, the number of people who present at the emergency department has decreased by 27%. So we have made a significant impact on this challenge even before the Treatment and Recovery Center came online. We've made progress on reducing the percentage of booked individuals at the Douglas County Jail. We still have a ways to go. Our goal is to get down below 5%. The age-adjusted suicide rate is something that is tricky to follow in a community of our size, but two things on this that I want to share, the work that we've done together as a coalition, as a community, we've seen a trend down. So the most recent number that I saw from public health is at 15.2, represents progress. And in the most recent Community Health Assessment, one of the five top strengths in Douglas County as identified by the people that were done, that participated in the survey, was people feel like there are good suicide prevention resources available. The number of opioid prescriptions has been reduced by over 10,000 over the last five years, and the annual number of prescriptions, that's as a result of leadership and a lot of work that was done by LMH Health, by by Heartland Community Health Center and by DECA. And so let's look then at this behavioral health crisis system. Again, we call this Intercept Zero in the sequential intercept model because all of these interventions help to divert people away from jail, away from unnecessary hospitalization, away from ambulance runs, and that results in the opportunity to have them get the care that they need in a least restrictive environment. We have implemented a really robust crisis system that if you were to compare it to other communities that we have participated in initiatives with NACO, with the Bipartisan Policy Council, is really kind of unique for a community of our size. So communities around the country are trying to bring all of these online. It's pretty unusual to have all of these services online in a community of 122,000 people in a state without Medicaid expansion. But let's focus a little bit this afternoon on this post-crisis care and one of the interventions in that post-crisis care space. So post-crisis care, these are some of the things that have evolved in Douglas County, social detox access. We're going to talk about that at the main meeting this afternoon, intensive care coordination. So a team that walks with people as they try to connect, engage, link with services following a crisis, or if they're, they find themselves struggling in the community and they want to avoid winding up in crisis. Intensive outpatient treatment, intensive outpatient treatment happens at mental health centers, it happens in substance use settings, substance use treatment settings. Assertive Community Treatment is a service that Burt Nash brought online about a year and a half ago. Assisted outpatient treatment is a treatment model for people who cycle in and out of the state hospital, traditional outpatient services, supportive housing, peer support. These are all the components of a well-developed post-crisis care system. And one of the key pieces in our model, which we invested in beginning in 2018, is the Heartland Radac Care Coordination Model. I remember when we first started talking about this, I had a conversation with Jason Hess, the CEO of Heartland Radac, who's here today, and we were talking about how people struggle when they, after they leave the emergency room or after they get out of the state hospital or as they're entering the reentry system. And Jason shared with me that Heartland Radac had grant dollars to provide this type of service and support in several communities around, across the state. And he said, you know, partial, part of the one grant is designed to support people in Douglas County. I said, well, great, how's that's going? And he said, well, I don't know, because we haven't gotten any referrals. He's, I think we've gotten a grand total of two or three referrals in the last two years. So we started talking about, well, what can we do about that? And he said, I think we could dedicate some capacity from Heartland Radac here in Douglas County. And I said, well, how much time? He said, 25% of the time. I said, well, what would it take to get 100% of the time? And over the last couple of years, that's what the Heartland Radac team has built. So we started with one care coordinator. It's now a team of six care coordinators and a supervisor and a team of four full-time recovery coaches working. So it's a team of 10 people, and I wanted to give them an opportunity to share with you the nature of their work, the impact of the work, and how the data supports that. So I'm going to turn it over to Jason Hess. Jason is the CEO of Heartland Radac.
Thank you. And hi to all of you. Some of you I haven't seen in a long time, so it's good to see some familiar faces. I think to start, I want to get my team introduced so that you know who you're talking to. You're going to get a whole lot less of me and a whole lot more of them today. So Bridget, I'm going to start with her. This is Bridget Lee. She's our supervisor over our intensive care coordination program, which operates really now statewide. Nick Castarona supervises all of our peers. So those four people that Bob just mentioned, he oversees their work. And then, of course, Stacy Cooper, who is our clinical director over care coordination case management services. So I'm going to spend just a little bit of time introducing you to us because even though Commissioner Kelly, you and I have said in many, many meetings together, you know me as a Douglas County Care Coordination Agency. And Commissioner Willie, I haven't really had any chance, or you, Commissioner Reed, to get to know you at all. So give you an idea about who Heartland Radac is. Talk a little bit about what makes this particular project unique even to our organization. And then I'm going to turn it over to Stacy, and she's going to, she and her team are going to walk through the actual work so you get a picture of what our folks are doing. Heartland Radac has been working in Douglas County since we opened our doors in 1998. And the shortest version of our story and getting into the primary business that we feel like we do so well is we started out as a substance use assessment referral agency. It's all we did. Somebody from Pam's group had somebody was struggling on probation. They send them to us. We don't really do much treatment. We do the assessment and help slot people into places that would be really good for them. We did that for a long time, and then some things happened with the state of Kansas that we ended up having some conversations about, one of which around 2001, the DUI law changed. And Behavioral Health Services with what was NSRS called and said, it's May, they changed the law. We have to implement things by July 1st. Any ideas? And, and the law changed to, to push people who were in the revolving door, some of what Bob was talking about in the criminal justice system, getting DUIs over and over again, following the law, which was very prescriptive, but not really showing any outcomes. So we came to the table and said, well, what if we tried a different approach? And instead of trying to put together a system where we're trying to draw down block grant dollars, or trying to draw down Medicaid dollars, or fee-for-service dollars, we just work with people on changing what they want to do, strictly from a sense of walking in the door, sitting down with somebody who's had seven DUIs and saying, do you want something different? And if you do, what do you want it to be? And we don't care what you want it to be. Whatever you say is what we're going to work on. So that's really how this whole thing started. We, we pushed into it very strongly there, and then in 2006-ish, K-Dads, it was still then, SRS came to us and said, we've got another issue, and this is the revolving door that Bob was talking about. We have people going into the state hospital, and they're coming back into the community. And when they get off the bus, instead of turning right and going to the mental health center, they turn left and they go back to their old habits. And then they go back to the emergency room, and then they go back to the state hospital. And then they get home and they turn left instead of right, and it just is cycling. And quite frankly, the state hospital is getting really tired of substance-using clients showing up on their door. So we put together a pilot project that was just going to be funded for one year. That's all it was going to be. Never going to, never going to expect any more funding. At the end of that year, they interviewed two clients, one that was doing really well, one that wasn't doing so much. And, and the message that they heard was from the person that wasn't doing so well in that they said over and over again, I'm here to get rid of this place because I'm tired of them. Everywhere I go, and David was our case manager, David shows up. I get arrested, David shows up. I go to the hospital, David shows up. I'm tired of David. Alls he does is ask me what I want. I don't know what I want. I want to be left alone. And, but, but the truth is, she hadn't been back to the state hospital in six months. And so we waited another year, and they found some money in the general budget to fund us in four counties. And the four counties are the biggest uses of state hospital services in our state at the time, where Shawnee, Douglas, Johnson, and Wyandotte. So we started out with two care coordinators with the goal of trying to help people stay out of the state hospital. If they go to the state hospital, how do we help with the discharge planning so they don't have to stay as long? How do we help set up resources back in the community so that it's a warm handoff back? And we did that. And, and we found that that's, we were absolutely able to show that people didn't have to go to state hospitals long. If they went for the first time even, and we picked up at-risk clients that are in the community, they didn't have to go for as long as they did before. So this, this piece, I say all of that just to show that this has grown from that model. And one of the things that has been really beneficial in this, the state of Kansas and multiple other agencies now, we, we received dollars from United Community Services in Johnson County, which are liquor tax dollars. They pay for an FTE to do this there. RSI pays for this for clients coming in and out of that crisis center. We actually are doing a Shawnee County Community Corrections. We have two FTEs working directly in, in with those probationers. And just because this model seems to work, one of the things that we have the freedom to do, because we put together a product that says, pay us for outcomes, just pay us for outcomes. Don't pay us for numbers of time, numbers of hours in the seat. Don't pay us for any, and if we, if our clients aren't improving, take the money away. We're not going to just see two clients. We'll see 200 if we need to. That's okay. We just want to see the folks that are at most risk. How can we get in their business enough that eventually they come around and want to do something different? So that particular project has now grown into a statewide model. Up until January, we were operating with about eight care coordinators outside of Douglas County and eight counties in Kansas. Sedgwick, Johnson, Wyandotte, Barton, Celine, Ellis, these four here. And and, and we've been successful. I went back to the table and said, we can probably take this a little farther. And K-Dad said, well, what if we had you do it statewide and work with every single state hospital client that goes into a state hospital potentially? And because I said to Bob five years ago, we could potentially work with everybody in Douglas County, 5,000 people doesn't seem as big as 120,000 people. Bridget doesn't necessarily agree with me, but we, we have been successful in taking this statewide now. So people coming out of state hospital institutions have the opportunity to work with one of our care coordinators. And part of that goal is access integrated care. How do we engage or help people engage with services in their home community and not step away until that engagement is very, very active? So, and I'm terrible at doing, doing PowerPoint. So if this jumps around, just ignore what's on the screen and ask questions later. I'm happy to answer anything that you might want to know. The thing that comes to us that's very unique about this project and what you all fund is that this is the only project that Heartland Radac has where we don't have to say no to anybody. So if you come to us for an assessment and you have Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance and access to services somewhere, we're going to do what we can to give you the resource, but you're not going to get an assessment at Heartland Radac because you have a resource that's going to pay for it somewhere else, and you can just go access the service. So we get to say, we have to say no to people with resources, which frustrates me till no end. If you're coming to treatment with us, it's the same thing. If you are referred to us through our Johnson County dollars, you have to be precariously housed. You have to be, you have to have both mental illness and substance use on board. If you refer to us through our statewide contract, you really have to be connected to a state hospital or very high risk for state hospitalization. As Bob and I talked about putting that initial care coordinator together, I think what I told him was, you know, I look at the population and what we're seeing, and I can probably, we can probably do the work with four full-time care coordinators. And then we got to four full-time care coordinators, and I went back to Bob and said, what was I wrong? Because, because the numbers, especially in the last few years, that we are seeing going in and out of hospital settings, emergency rooms, getting in the back of police cruisers are higher than they've ever been. And so often the folks that we are trying to guide and assist in their own narrative, they just don't know what to do. They're precariously housed, they're not working, their family has divorced them, they're in trouble with the law and on probation. They've been to the state hospital, or they've been to the emergency room multiple, multiple times, and the door just continues to revolve, and it's spinning faster and faster and faster. And a lot of times what we're seeing is they're, they're, they're really ill, and they're too ill to pull that in on their own without some guidance. But they're not sick enough to be identified as disabled or able to go access those services. And that crosses the range of people. It's not a poor person's issue. It's not a rich person's issue. It's everybody's issue. So what this funding does is it allows us to not have to say no to anybody. You can have resources and, and struggle, and we'll have care coordination and peer mentoring available. You can have no resources and struggle, and we'll have peer mentoring available and care coordination available. You can be at the homeless shelter, you can be at the jail, you can be at the hospital. We don't care. And it really is, it's made this project, and I've said this any number of times in meetings, and I tell people when I talk about Douglas County and what we're doing, this is probably the, the, the most enjoyment I've gotten out of a Heartland Radac project simply because our mission as an organization is access to services through partnerships in the communities. And, and the partnerships that we've developed here through the FQHC, through the Community Mental Health Center, through the hospital, through the community shelter, through community corrections and court services, the housing authority, you name it. And we've been able to do some really cool work here with, with some of the, some of the citizens that you all represent out there. And so I hope that some of what we do today is we demonstrate that you're getting some return on the investment that you're putting out there with us and talk a little bit and, and help you understand that, that the work really is a little bit different. There's a reason that we don't, that we don't build this as a fee-for-service model to help sustain it because so much of the work that we do is in direct conjunction with case managers with other agencies. And the last thing you want to do is have to get in your car, peel out, and get back to the office so you can bill first, so you can get paid so that your supervisor doesn't get mad at you for not meeting your billable hours. Forget all of that. If, if Bridget is a case manager, a care coordinator is working with a Burt Nash case manager, they can, they can meet with the client together at the same time, in the same place, in the same day, and, and that client gets the benefit of that work. So, and it allows us to bring in other funding sources to assist with this too. The K-Dads money is still Douglas County money. We have contracts for this particular work with two of the three CAMC organizations. So each one of them pays for part of an FTE to do this work for their, and that's Sunflower Health Plan and Optum or United Healthcare. They both, they both pony up for this as well. And so, yeah, so that's, I, that's just kind of the, the high-level view from Heartland Radac standpoint about what brought us to this place. I appreciate Bob talking about how we come to the table and try to slow the revolving door a little bit. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy and let her and Nick and Bridget talk through the actual work and what we do.
Thanks, Jason. Hello, guys. Thank you for having us. So how do we describe what intensive care coordination really is and kind of get into the weeds a little bit, tell some stories? I think we need to talk about the outcomes as well, but we'll get to that towards the end of this presentation. Intensive care coordination really does have some running goals that we're working on with all the clients that we're serving. And the first one really is system spanning and our system navigation. And we know that the Douglas County system of care is complex, and even for somebody like me, I'm just like, who do I call? We all know what that's like. Really, system navigation is meant to guide someone through the system to know how to open doors. You know, one of the things we do when we work with Heartland Community Health Center is we have their intake packet. We just fill it out with the client before they ever walk in the door and send it to them. So when they do get there, it's not complicated. They're walking in. Sometimes we have to use berry reduction funds to make sure that that payment or that, you know, that first payment is covered so they can actually get that medical appointment. That is system navigation. It's knowing who to call, knowing what door to open, knowing where to go next. Because all of the individuals that we're serving, like that slide previously, you've got a lot of things going on sometimes. Sometimes it's less complex, but sometimes there's a lot. And so it's really about where do we start? So navigating the system is, I think, one of the things that our care coordinators are really meant to do here. So navigating the system is, I think, one of the things that our care coordinators are really meant to do here. And understanding the resources is part of that. When you navigate a system like the Douglas County system of care, you really have to address personal and systemic barriers. Sometimes those personal barriers really are, you know, somebody has a criminal history that's prohibiting them from maybe getting the right apartment. And so you have to navigate that. Uh, systemic barriers can include anything like uh multiple co-pays to get medications or, you know, having um some back billing that doesn't allow you to get your foot in the door. It can also be wait times, you know, sometimes it's uh, it takes a couple of weeks to get that intake that we hoped that individual needed. And so we have to navigate, what are we going to do in those weeks while we wait? Um, addressing personal and systemic barriers is really one of our, um, that's how we shine. And I think that troubleshooting is, is a skill set that we bring to the table. Um, we are a regional alcohol drug and assessment center, right? We said that, so recovery is really important. And I know that we're working with individuals that have that substance use component and mental health component. The slide before this talked about 75% of the individuals that we're working with actually have both mental health and substance use. Um, so it's really a co-occurring focused um project. We're really focused on harm reduction and sobriety. Harm reduction can really uh take a lot of forms. You know, we have a lot of individuals out there that would really benefit from medicated assisted treatment. We're going to talk about that in a second. But harm reduction really can say, you know, if somebody's struggling with alcohol use, taking whatever it is that they're, you know, drinking on a daily basis and just taking it down a notch. We are having these kind, these types of conversations with people, trying to get creative on, on ways that we can explore what recovery looks like for them. Instead of like cookie cuttering it, right? We want it to be individualized and we use our care coordinators, which kind of bring that clinical component and peer mentors to bring that lived experience component to tackle whatever recovery needs to look like. Ultimately, we're focused on decreasing high cost resource utilization, which really is LMH ED, the jail, access to EMS, police involvement, things like that. The more stable, the more recovered an individual gets, the less likely we're going to see those high cost utilization points. And ultimately that leads to self-sufficiency. We want people to achieve their goals and tasks, whatever it is that they, um, they have. What makes us a little different, just to kind of pull an illustration here? When you have a care coordinator and a system navigator, you really see, it's kind of like the spokes of a wheel, right? We are in the middle, we're creating all of these connection points. And ultimately what we're trying to do is to make that wheel roll. By connecting social support, mental health, housing, whatever it is, we're trying to bring the system in to help and stabilize an individual. And by being the center of that wheel, by pulling everybody together and coordinating the care, we found that people have really great experiences and also we have really great outcomes. The other thing that is really important about this project is how we are integrated within this system. Remember I talked about that system navigation? What that really means is that we know how to play in the sandbox with DECA, LMH, Burton Ash, Lawrence Community Shelter. We have all of these connection points and we are such a valued part of the post-crisis system that we have all of these different agencies and stakeholders referring to us to ensure that um, you know, individuals are getting the right care at the right time. So this is some um data from 2022. All the data that we were, show you today is all going to be from last year, just an FYI there. So in 2022, we had a thou, over a thousand referrals from these different agencies and um throughout the system. One of the major differences we want to highlight, because we do have different forms of what is case management and intensive care coordination and really highlighting what is intensive care coordination, what is different. So really what is different is how we deliver the services, which is really a bridge model. We're walking people into doors. Our goal is not to work with them forever. If we can connect them to a Burton Ash case manager, cool. We're going to take that and run with it and maybe try to get them served within 30 to 90 days. But our intention isn't necessarily to work with them forever, however, we will. There's no expiration on the services that we, that we offer. Like Jason said, there's no exclusionary criteria. If you are 18 years or older and you are, well, I like to say, if you are on the doorstep of Douglas County, we're going to serve you. So what ends up happening is individuals come here because LMH is kind of a hub for the different um counties that surround this area. And just because maybe you're not a Douglas County resident, but if you're accessing care and you're accessing ED, we're going to help you get connected to services wherever you're coming from. Sometimes that involves gray hunting somebody to Wichita. And other times it's just kind of looking at the county, um, you know, next to us for what they need. Um, like I said, it's a team approach, we system span, walk through doors. So here's kind of a, a, a list, I could fill this entire thing with multiple things and, and it's endless on the different things we do. But this is really what it looks like. I want to pull out a couple of things and I'm going to toss it over to Bridget. One of the big um behavioral health uh initiatives in this county is suicide care. Um, and so zero suicide protocols. We have been involved with Bob in that initiative. It has been very vital and I think incredibly important for the, the care that we're providing to the individuals uh that are getting intensive care coordination services. And so within this last year, we implemented uh Columbia Suicide Assessment into our medical record. Um, you know, formalized safety planning, um, assessment of suicide, um, intervention strategies, risk reduction strategies, making sure that essentially all of our care coordinators and our peers are equipped to navigate that. And that really was a foundational, it, you know, started from Douglas County and it ultimately um allowed us to kind of implement those protocols through our entire agency and that covers the entire state. So that's, I think that's really a cool thing, how it started here and, and, and came out. Um, I'm going to toss it over to Bridget to kind of pull out some of the highlights. We're not going to go through all of these, but some of them we want to highlight.
Hi, so what does ICC do? It's on, it's on. Oh dear.
These are better, she's on.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
What don't we do? I think Jason hit on it completely is we show up. We show up for that individual where they are at. It's a completely client-centered, strength-based program. Um, so we meet with them to identify the goals and tasks that they want to work on. Not what we see that they need to work on, but what they are willing to work on. And hopefully we can wrap back around to the things that we might identify as creating the barriers that they're having, such as substance use. But they're not ready to see that yet, so we're not going to press on that. So we can meet them at detox or um, and get them connected with an alcohol and drug assessment through our agency to then get them referred to treatment. Um, while they're in treatment, we establish those goals of maybe they are not able to get employment because they don't have any identification. They have lost it all because they are, they found themselves homeless and living in all different areas. So, okay, they need employment, but let's backtrack, we have to get them some identification. So we work with them to get their birth certificate, to get their identification. We have barrier reduction funding, which I think we'll get into. That is funding that allows us to pay for that for them. They're in treatment, they can't pay for it, they're unemployed, they can't pay for it, it's a barrier. That's where we can step in through those, through those funds to help them. Um, you know, another big area that we support them in is medication or treat, medicated assisted treatment. Um, and what that is, is a harm reduction model. It's to help, it's medication that helps them curb their cravings. And we partner with various organizations throughout Kansas to help them with that. Not just here in Douglas County, here in Douglas County, we work through DECA um, to offer them that BHG, we partner with them. Um, we can even connect them to CKF, a partner that we have out in Salina through telehealth. So various ways, but harm reduction is a really important feature in, in their stabilization. Because if we can help them curb those cravings and keep them from picking up a needle and they're able to then attend to employment, they're able to be present with their families um through that MAT. So it, that's a vital component of access to care that we help them with. Um, I think that, you know, this list is a short example of all the things that we can do. And like Stacy said, we're not going to go through all of it. I think the great thing about this program is there's a lot of area of gray space that we can work in. It's not rigid, we don't bill for services. Um, you know, uh, on Monday, we have a certain ICC on-call for each day of the week. And on Monday, Burton Ash called our on-call ICC first thing in the morning and said, hey, look, we have somebody here at the front. We were able to schedule their intake, but they have no way of communicating with you, they don't have a phone. So we were hoping that maybe if you're able, you can hop over and meet with this individual before they leave. So our care coordinator hopped over there and this is first thing, I think it was 8:30 in the morning. We got over there, we met with this individual. Um, she was slightly in crisis. The care coordinator got her to come down a little bit to find out what was going on. Turns out there was some sexual trauma. Um, so our care coordinator addressed what was happening at that moment, walked her over to the care center for domestic violence, um, helped coordinate them calling Willow to see if we could get her a bed. After we got that situated, the care coordinator then walked her over to TRC um, to get a med intake. Because if you show up during certain hours, you can get that med intake instead of waiting for her appointment. That was three weeks down the road with Burton Ash. This all transpired within a two-hour period. So again, because we don't bill for services and we can, we can work together with the case managers at Burton Ash. Um, and we have that strong relationship with the community partners. We were able to facilitate access to care for her and she didn't have to go to the ED and she wasn't arrested. Um, so I think that's a really good, just quick synopsis of what we can do um, in a short amount of time. So that was a matter of two hours, just imagine what we can do in months. You know, in working with somebody to create that stabilization in the hopes that they don't return.
So, you know, and that's a great story because it really illustrates all the different ways we're navigating the system of care and knowing resources and knowing what to do and managing the crisis and having those relationships, et cetera. Um, service delivery is really important when this project uh is, for the success of this project. And that really means that this post-crisis support, sometimes we actually do end up showing up to kind of navigate the crisis. But ultimately we end up being um a support system for everyone from KSP HQ to um the, the AOT team, to the mobile team. At the end of the day, we are a place that they can ultimately shuffle and refer individuals that continue to need that community-based support. Um, one of the things that we haven't really touched on a little bit is just this idea of the no wallet biopsy. And I, just to say it, because everybody's going to be like, what is that on the screen and what does that mean? Do you want to explain it or I can explain it?
It's the one thing I said I would say and then I didn't bother to even talk about it. So we talk about the wallet biopsy a lot and what the ball, and, and feels, what the heck do you mean by that? Well, what that means is so often when we go access services as individuals, I don't care who you are sitting around this table or sitting out in the community right now. The first thing that happens when you walk in the door is they ask you to open your wallet up so that we can see what cards you have, what green stuff you have in there. And then based on that, and based on what those payers say, these are the services that you can get. Um, and that frustrates the hell out of me when it comes to getting services for myself uh or my family. And I know it frustrates the heck out of the people that we serve out there who are barely getting by and trying to figure out the, all the processes of what Medicaid will or won't pay for, what they're, what, whatever they have will or won't pay for. We, we don't have to do the wallet biopsy. So when I was talking earlier about everybody has access, that's really what I mean. And I have, and we, we in our other projects do have to do the wallet biopsy. In other systems and other counties, um, if you come to us for this service and you are uh one of the three Medicaid organizations that we don't contract with, I'm sorry.
You're out of luck unfortunately.
You know, next time when your re-enrollment rolls around, you might think about who you're choosing and we'll be happy to step in then. So, so that's some unfortunate pieces to how our system is just set up. And so we put this together as a system-spanning approach. So when we talk about the wallet biopsy and, and use that as one of those metaphors that, that I think sticks, so.
I say one thing.
Yeah.
I think it's important to link that concept to the whole overall concept of health equity. Um, and you know, there are certain projects that we've done here that are specifically designed to address health equity challenges. This is one of those. The Social Detox Project is one of those. We're trying to work through that, the issue of equity and payment and access for all through how the mobile team um model, model works. It's a challenge, but I think it's a challenge that is really being addressed through the models that we've implemented over the last five years.
Thanks for that.
Ask a question about that, Bob, real quick. So are we tracking, you know, the, the different subgroups on that? If, if we know that we're disproportionately serving certain populations, do you, do you look to see whether we're actually meeting that disproportionality in the work that, that you're doing?
So I, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to answer your question to the extent that maybe you're asking it. Uh, but I, I think we do. Um, we do a lot of data tracking around different demographics. We do tracking around payment source, we do tracking around. And I mean, we, that's, that's part of what that is, is trying to figure out who we're, who we're actually seeing month to month. Um, and you know, and also looking at different data when we can get access to it. And I, and I use Wyandotte County as one of my examples, because this has come up recently is, you know, there's funding around to provide services to folks that are, that are uh overdosing on opiate medications, which is obviously the biggest issue that we got going right now. And you know, what we're trying to push into is, is, is where those pockets of things are happening. It's easy to say we need to serve Wyandotte County, but if the big problem is at 18th and Quandero, how do we focus our services towards 18th and Quandero and outreach to some of those stakeholders that are around that area to say, hey, there's this thing we have. The, the biggest way that we, that we, that we try to impact some of what you're talking about is building really strong relationships, both with law enforcement and the local hospital. Because they see everybody for everything and it does get disproportionate at times. Um, but if they're not thinking about who, then we can step in and provide assistance. So I, I said, I don't think I've got probably a full answer for your question, Commissioner, but maybe that helps or ask another one back so that we can get more.
So if you can go back to the slide that says the number of referrals you had from different agencies? Yeah, yeah. So do you break down which subgroups those referrals are from? Do you, do you look at that kind?
Oh, so if we were to look at our LMH numbers, could we, could we break that down? We could, we, we, we don't report out on that with our monthly reports.
Do you any comparison to what our, you know, we have local health data that says there's disparities in these areas? Cause you're making the argument that by making it no cost, we're removing a barrier and that that barrier may have been what caused the health disparities to begin with, right? So I'm just trying to see if on the backend, we're actually tracking that data to see if we're making a difference.
We have, we, we, we do look at that internally.
And you could share that with Bob and Bob could.
Yeah, we could certainly pull some of that out and we'll try to do something like that, sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, hey, you're, you're okay, ask questions. I want to, I want to breeze through this because I really want to make sure that Nick has an opportunity to talk about recovery coaching and peer mentorship. This is really about integration. Uh, we are housed out of Burton Ash, we navigate all of these systems, we go everywhere that we need to go. Um, I think it's really important, the substance use system navigation is a regional system and we know certain programs are best serving certain populations and we assist individuals to getting the right care at the right time. Um, this is a reflection of some of our data. So what this really is, is it reflects how our clients access these different partnerships or these different a, agencies within the system of care. So in 2022, if you take all of our clients, these are the individuals that are accessing DECA and Burton Ash and such. Berry Reduction Funds, this is something that's built into uh the model that we have found to be so incredibly successful. Because if we're going to address uh systemic and personal barriers, we have to have some kind of funding to be able to navigate that and, and to get us over that hump. Um, and so Berry Reduction Funding in this county, it really looks like transportation, medications, housing, employment preparation. Um, medication-assisted treatment is something that we do pay for sometimes, but ultimately we try to use our other resources to pull that together. Gift cards, IDs, all that stuff we're doing. Okay, so let's turn it over to Nick, who is in charge of all of our peer mentors.
Thank you, Stacy. So I'm a little biased that the peer role is the most vital in the continuum of care. And I'm not biased because of the fact I supervise them, but because my own lived experience. I am classically the person that was going through that revolving door. And so, you know, when we talk about recovery coaches, I put up there that they're agents of change and hope. You know, I can talk on behalf of all the clients that I've served and myself that when we sit around this table and we talk about these systems, it's confusing to us. Can you imagine what it's like for them? when we sit around this table and we talk about these systems, it's confusing to us. Can you imagine what it's like for them? You know, they're already dealing with so much guilt, shame. They have zero hope. They probably don't have their families in their corner anymore. And with care coordination, it's like they give them the roadmap to all of these resources. They, they can identify what the destination is going to be. Identify the directions on how to get there. But if they don't know how to drive, how do they get through the door? And so I like to think of the peers as kind of the adhesive that keeps them connected to all the services, somebody that's got the lived experience. All of the peers are certified through the state. As people in long-term recovery from substance use, mental illness, incarceration, they're a non-clinical role. And again, because it's not billed for service, they can do whatever it is that's going to help the client stay engaged and walk through that door of those resources. So getting them connected to sober living houses, getting them connected to recovery based community support, whether that's 12-step, whether that's through their church congregation, whether it's you know, building a support network around them with people in recovery to have that support when maybe they don't have an appointment scheduled on this day to go see a care coordinator or go see a therapist. What do they do during that time? You know, when they're faced with those challenges, those urges, the mental crisis, who can make contact, who can walk with them? What better person than someone that's walked that path with them? And so it's a person that can relate to them, that can help inspire that hope of, hey, if, if I can do it, you can do it. You know, they can help break down those trust barriers. A lot of them have trust issues with the systems that are there to help them. And they're overwhelmed. So they have someone that can walk beside them and walk through that door. We can, you know, we can teach them a lot in the day-to-day interactions, whether that's helping them fill out job applications, doing mock interviews to get them prepared to go find that job. We can go fishing with them. If it's a matter of finding some pro-social healthy activity for them to do that doesn't involve drinking, drugging, or any other negative behaviors that brought them through that revolving door. That's what the recovery coaches are there for is to teach them how to live life again. Utilize all these resources. And you know, the greatest thing for me is once all these resources are in place and they're now utilizing all these, these systems that are put in place for them. The peer gets to work with them beyond that to make sure that they sustain these changes. They continue to use those services that they were connected with through the care coordination. And for me, I can say one of the greatest rewards of being a recovery coach or a peer. I live and, and I live my recovery program. There's nothing better than seeing a client walk in two years after you've discharged him services and watch him celebrate a sobriety birthday or talk about getting their kids back or these types of things. I think, you know, one story I have of an individual here in Douglas County fairly recently. He originally was connected with RADAC through our KDOC contract. We have peers that work within RSI and Wyandotte at the Crisis Center there. We have peers in the community. We have peers in, what is it? Five of the seven prisons throughout the state. And we also have a new program that's what, two years, the peer resident through Lansing Correctional Facility where we actually have residents that are peers that are working, worked with KDS to get certified to work as a peer within Lansing while they still are incarcerated. And so that demonstrates that that lived experience is powerful and there's nothing more powerful than watching when these people come out now, they have these systems in place, but now they have hope that they can do it because they met someone else that could do it. And so we had an individual that was first connected with RADAC in Lorna Correctional Facility, went through our programs there, but didn't have anything set up when he got out. He, he didn't have care coordination, didn't have a peer set up. He didn't know those services were available. And I think it took three months before he was back in prison. In that three months, multiple ER visits, multiple visits to the local county jail, ultimately ended up back in prison. And at that point, he reconnected with one of our peers in Lornet who contacted me. And we immediately got him connected and started building these plans with case care coordination from post-release and a peer that was able to meet him before he was released and start building that trust. We met him the day he got off the bus back in Douglas County. This individual had, according to him, used his entire adult life over 20 years, had no relationship with his family, no relationship with his kids. Had, hadn't been housed in over 10 years. Got to Douglas County with nothing, not knowing what to do, but he had that little bit of hope that he got from that peer and he stayed connected to the peer. And today he is, he's been housed for over a year. He's gainfully employed at Berry Plastics. He has partial custody of his kids now. And he just celebrated two months of sobriety about a month ago. And he also sits on one of the state chapters of the 12-step organization that he's involved with. He's sponsoring other men. And so for me, that's the importance of the peer is they build a life. They take these tools that care coordination gives them. They take that roadmap and the peer teaches them how to drive and navigate those systems and walks that path with them. So that's pretty much what our recovery coaches do. It's a little different than some of the other peer is that other organizations within the systems use. We are doing groups within Douglas County Jail or we're starting those in July. We participate in the Peer Fellowship with Bob, who are four peers, participate there with other community peers and it's a learning collaborative, really. These peers are not only giving the opportunity to better their community, but better themselves. So they grow professionally throughout the process. We've got several that have gone on to school and, and are now moving towards a clinical profession. I think the biggest difference is just being embedded in the community. We have no barrier within our work of where we can go and what we can do with them.
I just want to make one quick point, which is we've partnered with many agencies through the Peer Fellows Program. And I want you to know that we've had peers from Heartland RADAC and three of the cohorts of the Peer Fellows Program, 100% of those peers have stuck with the program for a year or more and transitioned into full-time employment after they've, into after they've left. One of our greatest challenges is stable workforce. And one of the hardest things to develop is the professional skills that are needed to do this work as a peer. And Heartland RADAC has demonstrated incredible stability in the way that they develop their culture for peers.
Thank you, Bob, for that. We're going to wrap up our presentation and just really talk about the data. You know, we, we told you that this is an outcomes-based pros of program. Where we're hoping to have great outcomes with the individuals that we work with. What we have found over time is individuals who participate with intensive care coordination, they engage in recovery activities, they engage in mental health services, they locate safe and sober housing, they get employment, they resolve legal issues, they reconnect with children and their families. They, they essentially, you know, find a sense of belonging because they have the support system to navigate the system of care. This is some of our data. I want to just really highlight this one right here. We have individuals who are engaging when they began comparatively to when they, as they exit or as they, you know, while they're in services. I think what the number really speaks to me is that we're also not only just connecting individuals to mental health if they've never been connected, but we're also supporting individuals in staying connected. I think the, the staying connected component of mental health access is really important because things happen. And if you don't have the ability to get back involved whenever there's a crisis, you know, ultimately that could lead to some of the things that we don't really want for an individual, which is just, you know, more instability. Recovery measures, these individuals that were engaging in recovery activities when they began services and those that ended up while they were in services, that's a huge number and a huge difference. It's really a primary focus of the individuals that we're working with is to engage them in any form of recovery, whatever that looks like. And, and sometimes that's just talking to a recovery coach. Be surprised, you know, what we can learn from an individual. What does success look like? Right? I think this is, you know, kind of the end of our presentation. We saw some great stories when it comes to Bridget, when it comes to Nick. You know, we look at success maybe a little differently than the average agency. You know, just by an individual meeting and sitting down to talk to us about what's going on and being open to hearing ideas about how they can, you know, achieve their goals. It, that is success. If they keep coming back, if they answer our texts, we are in it, we are in the successful zone. And a strengths-based approach really means that we're looking at every single thing that that individual is doing as a success story. And so I think that, that, that makes us unique. We, we just count every win as, as often as we can and we continue to see them. So anything else you want to add?
I would just encourage you, we, we connected some of the data reports. So the 2022 report, which has a full year of data and then the most recent one, which is in May, if you look at that end of year report in December, some of the reports that Heartland RADAC is sending us have those client success stories at the top end of them. And I think they really speak to just the full tapestry of challenges and how the care coordination team helps people to overcome those.
Questions, commissioners?
I do have a few questions. I could go way into the weeds on this, but I will just pick a few hopefully quick questions. So one, I'm curious now with the TRC being online, if in your list of sort of referral sources as well, as well as there was another chart that I was thinking of specifically, or just the numbers from 2022, when talking about the stabilization measures and you talk about being admitted to psych hospitals or units since service began and accessing a community crisis stabilization center. Are you, do you have intention of, of pulling out TRC specific and then that category otherwise would be any other surrounding facilities?
Yeah, we absolutely pull those out because they're important to us to know who we're connecting with and how we're connecting with them. So in the TRC, especially because of this project that's so specific to Douglas County, we want to make sure that that's captured. So.
Perfect. Thank you. And then I'm also, well, first I've just a quick comment that I really love your model. I'm a big fan of, of intensive care coordination and just fundamentally that language, care coordination versus case management. And I do advocacy and direct service in the community and there's all kinds of names for that, all kinds of philosophies and approaches to it. And I appreciate, you know, but time and place for different approaches. But just really have always been impressed with and appreciative of the, the low to no barrier. Meet you where you're at, show up and peer first because that is so critical. So and part of that also for me is it's all about empowerment, right? And that's what you're doing is you're empowering folks with information. And on the referral level, it's about empowering people to self-refer or to go seek those services through whoever their trusted person is, whether it's a Willow advocate or their Burt Nash therapist or whomever. So I guess my question, my first question about that is how do you think people, it's not a super substantial number in, in these charts, but how do you think people know to self-refer? Do you find that it's folks who have been in your services before and then have fell out of that cycle and come back? Is that what you think?
I would say it's by word of mouth. They have met somebody in the community that has gained access to our services, found them beneficial and, and they say, hey, you should call RADAC. Because it's not Heartland, it's RADAC. You should call RADAC, call RADAC and get a worker, call RADAC. They'll help you get into that mental health intake. Call RADAC. They might be able to help you get into an Oxford house or connect you with a peer mentor. So really those self-referrals are through other people who have benefited from our program primarily, I would say.
Awesome.
And I think the interesting thing, piece to that, that I would add is over the years, those self-referrals have become more and more appropriate. So when we started all of this back in 2006, the self-referral really was, hey, I hear you guys have money for housing. Can I get in on that? And that, we don't hear that anymore. And that's a testament to the leadership of this team. Well, I don't get those calls anymore. Usually they find the paperwork, they see my name and they call me and say, hey, I need money. But, but that's not the case anymore. A lot of times that's what we're getting and that word of mouth is helping. So, good question.
Thank you. And then I'm also just curious. Happy to see a pretty like diverse list of social service organizations beyond the ER, the criminal justice partners and our mental health center, sort of the primary referral sources, if you will. I'm curious, what is any part of your team sort of maintaining, I guess, a feedback loop with those agencies that do referrals and like both in the way of cross-training? And also, you know, if that feels appropriate and helpful to sort of just spread the word about your services, but also just like a feedback loop to see how referrals are going, whether or not they're working, whether or not folks are kind of ping ponging back to the original source without successful contact or anything like that.
Bridget probably could answer that one best. So another great question. So we, we do what we call closing the loop with the referral source. So we get a referral source and we will let them know first, we'll acknowledge receiving the referral. Once we are able to hopefully make contact with that individual, of course, we get a release of information form signed for that referral source so that we can go back and say, hey, look, we were able to connect with this individual. So to close that loop and say, hey, we were able to connect. On the flip side of that, you know, we get these referrals and unfortunately we're not able to connect with, with everybody for one reason or another. They don't have, you know, they had a phone, but now it's disconnected or they're homeless and they don't have any way to contact. We will make reasonable efforts to outreach them at least a minimum of three times. And then we will then close the loop with the referral source and say, hey, look, unfortunately we were not able to make contact. If they happen to show back up, please let us know, maybe we can meet or if they have a scheduled appointment. So if it's from a referral source like Burt Nash.
I'm gonna interrupt you real quick, sorry.
I know we have a lot of people are coming in. We're still having a meeting. So if you can keep your voices down, that would be great. Thank you.
So if we, if it's a referral source from a community partner that has regularly, regularly scheduled meetings with this referral source, we will also say, hey, look, if they have a scheduled appointment, would it be possible for you to invite us to that meeting so that we can connect? We are going to try to find a way to connect with that individual. But there is a closing the loop process.
And I'll just add one more thing to that. I think that troubleshooting with referral sources is something that we do frequently. I think that Pam and I, and you know, we've just been talking about this criminal justice expansion that happened within this year and like, what does it take to really integrate within that system? And the reason why we've had those conversations is we were, we're monitoring our referral numbers and we're saying, what can we do to be more embedded? And the results of those conversations ends up being, you know, let's get him a badge, let's put him behind the wall. Let's, let's make him part of the orientation process, you know, like really creative ideas that only really come from, you know, things not working well. And, and that's the thing. I think that the relationships and acknowledge like something's not working here. What do we need to do? You know, Bridget has probably every quarter a meeting with Burt Nash in which they're literally talking about the integration that they have because we're, we're literally in the building. But talking about what it needs to look like as people communicate and, and troubleshoot those barriers. So I think that at the end of the day, that's really what we're doing. We do have that feedback, feedback loop with our referral sources and community partners. I know we're out of time and I have quite a few questions. I'll probably follow up with your team after this and, and just get those questions answered. So I know we've kind of run out the clock.
Happy to do that.
And yeah, and we're happy to sit down for a cup of coffee. Sometimes if you've got questions and happy to answer them. My, my last question, because I'm with Commissioner Willie. I wish we had more time. And this may be for Bob, you know, one of the things we've always talked about is it reduces and it reduces the cost of high dollar care, right? So we're reducing the number of ambulance transits. We're reducing the number of LMH emergency room visits or reducing the number of times. Have we ever put a dollar figure to that? You know, because the idea is that prevention is, is going to be less costly than, than intervention. You guys look like you're chomping at the bit to tell me this.
It is something that I know, I will take 10 seconds. It is something that we've looked at before. In fact, one of the things we'd really like to do is a Million Dollar Murray study, which was a study they did on a gentleman in New York a number of years ago. But putting all of the pieces together is, that's the challenge is how many times have they actually been admitted to emergency rooms? And finding that data for some of these folks, it's pretty voluminous. So it is something that we would really like to do. One of the things working with the Medicaid organizations is how our work is impacting what they're paying out and how it's paying out. And I think that's going to help us do that. So, thank you.
I, I was gonna say, I think it's something that like as a staff team that I've thought about, and then I think there are some things that we can do locally to at least come up with some average numbers around ER visits, EMS visits that would mean something because they're local, because we have access to a lot of that data. So this is something, you know, kind of interdisciplinary between Bob and Jill Joliker and Katie Fitzgerald and that I'd like us to put to, it might not be completely comprehensive, but I think it would get us, get us a sense of what some of this is leading towards.
And it's a metric we're tracking with the TRC. So what is the cost per care visit when you consider the totality of the cost of the TRC? Same thing with supportive housing beds. What does a bed cost at AHH? What does a bed cost in transitions? So we're starting to assemble the ability. So we're starting to assemble the ability to share that with you.
Leave with the final question that we can follow up with later would be what resources do we have for minors dealing with substance use issues? Because that's we looked at kind of adults. Um, that's kind of my curiosity is is that? And then what are the other gaps in in care? So we don't have to.
Yeah, it's a huge gap and there is no good quick answer to that question right now, but it's a good one. So.
Well, thank you so much for coming. I wish I wish we could dive into my RC algorithms too, because I saw that on there. And I remember when we started my RC, I think Jill's around here. And so that's super exciting to see us actually using that data to refer clients. So. Appreciate all the work and and all the information that you've provided today and we'll follow up with other questions. So thank you. We are going to um take a break here and we'll start at 5:30 with our regular business meeting.